United States of America and the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty of the people.
Is Lori not going to be here with anyone else?
I am with Lori.
Okay. I think we're still good though, right? All right, wonderful. Have a chance to review them. I'll look for a motion to approve. Motion all, second. Ed, thank you, sir. All right. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Let's jump on to the resolutions of the day. First we're looking at is the first one, appointing members to Oswego County Soil and Water Conservation District for Directors. And is that just reappointments or is that a new one?
It's a new one, I think I'm going on now.
All right. So let's look for a motion. Do I have a motion? There are any motions? All right, thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
I don't think I should, so.
Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ed. All right, any discussion about the slate of appointees, which I think is... Legislator Terry Wilbur.
Oh, is he going back there?
Legislative Linda Lockwood and Jeffrey Richards.
I guess I could.
No, I thought you were wrong, man.
I did too. It says, it has, this is what it's saying about Terry Wilber, Linda Lockwood, and I thought you were right.
I want to have a check with Terry.
Yeah, because I know he talked to me that I was supposed to, no, but this has to be held. This one has to be held.
Marie!
Question, two-part question.
Go ahead.
This includes EP1 and EP3. We asked a year ago if are any Democrats ever going to be asked, contacted, or made aware of any appointments?
And when that was asked, and my understanding is that we...
We would get back to you?
Oh, I was told that the affiliation is not the important piece, it's the skill set of those who are appointed.
Of course it is.
Whether or not the two folks that are listed here are both the majority leader and vice-chair of the legislature. But I did think, Mel, weren't you on this? I thought you were in the middle of the packet, Phil. Do you happen to know about that? You want to hold off on this one or...
Well, actually, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's the Farmland Conservation Board, not Water and Soil.
It was two of them.
Oh, there was two, okay.
Um, let's do this. Let's, let's hold off on this one if I could. We'll table this for a second and we'll verify that so we can double-check back quick, Phil, or... I thought Mel was on this one too.
I don't know what EP3.
EP1, EP1. Because the names listed here are Terry, but I thought Terry was...
Because I thought Terry was coming off and he...
All right, let's do this. Let's table one and we'll jump to two. I do know we were looking for...
Or you can amend it, pass it through and amend it on the floor.
Okay.
You can add a word.
Okay.
Figure out what's going on.
I'm not much in this. And then Terry. See, I thought it was two. I'm just confused why it's not here right now.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I mean, I cannot fix this and then fix it. Let's, let's fix it. Although then we have to do a special meeting if our development committee recommend it.
Well, if you amend it here, well, it just goes to the floor.
All right. Is there anybody who can verify this? It's Chris from Jeff from Chris, or I thought, I thought the pack and I had that.
Yeah.
No, it's maybe it's just got...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have requested a special meeting, EDP, prior to the legislative meeting.
Oh, okay.
So...
I didn't say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
To reward the bid for the sewer line.
That's correct. Okay, so let's do this then. Let's table it until the end of the meeting. If we don't have an answer, we will do this at that meeting. Is everyone okay with that? I'd rather not pass this.
Go to the floor.
Personally, I feel uncomfortable voting on something here as a group that I don't believe is accurate. It's just like, I'd rather have it corrected than go on it. But I mean, if there are some role, we can, we can do that. It's totally up to all of you in this committee, so I'd just like it to be correct.
I think there's three of us that think it's accurate.
Okay.
Especially Ed.
All right, so you want to make a motion to remove Terry?
I made a motion to amend that, remove Terry.
Okay, do we have a second to add? Don't you have a second? All. All right. Any discussion about that motion?
Amendment? That is to remove just Terry?
Remove Terry and place Mel instead is the motion.
Chris is fine.
Go ahead.
He's willing. He's going to come back again with an answer, so if you just want to skip it and circle back to it.
We could hold off on the floor.
All right, well then, we have an amendment motion, so we need to table that, correct? So we can jump on a resolution too, is that correct? So we'll join the motion table? Sorry, we should have told Reggie today, I apologize, guys.
Yeah, you can motion to table it until, you should say that, the table of motion should say that you're waiting additional information in this meeting.
Okay.
So that there's no confusion that it's tabled until another time.
Okay. So we do have an amendment motion on the table that has been seconded. We're in the discussion point of that amended motion. Do we want to vote?
Someone could take a motion to table the resolution until additional information comes in. Doesn't have to table the amendment. Just table the resolution.
That's a good idea. I can't wait to see.
This is not a Robert's Rules, this is kind of like, yes!
So resolution amending bylaws, considering...
None of mine.
As it's written.
Isn't, Terry isn't going to go on?
He's going to stay on for this last year and the transition to afterwards.
That was changed, that's okay. It's fine with me.
All right, if we need to fix that, on the floor we'll fix it. Would you be willing to...
Are we allowed to table?
No.
No, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna go back to the original resolution. Apologize, everyone, so let's do this. If you'd be willing, withdraw your...
Yeah, I know, listen.
I apologize.
I apologize, or as ever my understanding, I apologize.
We're a good vote, we're a good vote, you know. But I, I'll, I'll make a motion to rescind my motion to amend the resolution.
Okay.
I have to withdraw.
I would draw. Okay.
This is a little thing to wrap it up.
All right, let's do this then.
We don't go by Robert's Rule.
Any further discussion to the resolution appointing the three members that are noted in the resolution? If not, I'll look for a vote. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Thanks, guys, have fun. All right. Let's go to PP2. Resolution amending the bylaws to the Oswego County Environmental Management Council. My understanding, if this is correct, then we can, we can move forward with this. I have one. Listen, thank you, Mel, do you have a second? Paul, thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, great. Resolution appointing Oswego County Environmental Management Council. You see the list there? That is, I believe, is that reappointments with one new? No, I think this is a full reappointment, correct? Joe, are you in this one? Because this is all reappointments.
No, they're not our reappointments.
Okay. Oh, Legislature Lori Manganos coming on, correct? She's new. Okay. Any other discussion on this list? Legislature Pat Twist, Peter Rosenbaum, Legislature Lori Manganos, Sandy Preport, Hal Smith, Jesse McMakin, and Holly Carpenter.
Rosenbaum, Peter?
Yes, Peter Rosenbaum.
Good.
All right. Okay. Do I have a motion? I don't think I have one yet, do I?
No, ma'am.
I'm thrown back, I'm sorry.
I got you, I got you.
Do I have a motion?
I may.
Okay, I don't blame you. We might need to, we have a lot of folks here today. So do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Paul, thank you. Second. All in favor. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys, that carries. PP4, resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to requests of land order inclusion within our existing certified agricultural districts. This is our annual time and place for anyone who's interested in become, if they're named, to become a member of this list. It gives you the ability, right to farm, I believe, is my understanding of it. And it is open to anyone who would be willing to apply.
Yeah.
All right. A motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Mel, thank you. Comments?
I did a little research. Hues County has to at least profit 10,000 on the property included in one of these districts. What are our requirements?
So, if I can, there's, there's two different inclusions in the district. One, you simply have to have land that can be used productively for agricultural purposes. That's what this is. So if you have a woodlot that you tend and harvest, if you have a field that you rent to a neighboring farmer for production, anything agricultural based that, that can happen there. You can have your land classified as being within the ag district. If you want the tax exemptions that go with that, then you have to meet that $10,000 threshold in order to qualify as being significantly involved in agriculture, in order to get the tax benefit from it.
So what durable documents? You give a W-2 and prove that you...
Yeah, there's a whole report that is done between soil and water, real property, cooperative extension, and it lists the acreage, it shows the parcel, it talks about what crops they have, or if they're raising animals, what types of animals, and then dollar amounts associated with that.
Is that something we can find on the nearly impossible-to-navigate website?
The ag district? Should be under the point of...
Do we have a list of people, the amount, how much, how much of the tax break they're getting? Where do we get that document?
So Chris should have a list of everybody.
Chris Jones?
Chris Jones. We can make people that, that shows where they all are.
I'd like a list.
Okay.
I'm excited.
One town, Oswego Town, they're asking for a copy of schedule that, that started last year approving the farm income coming in and the discount. I didn't get my paperwork in on time two years ago, so instead of paying 15,000, I mean 14,000, I paid 15,000. So it's about a thousand dollar saving overall.
On every parcel?
Well, I've got like 100 acres over there, so I mean, that's, that's, so I don't know the exact percentage that people get on a discount. You know, it varies by the type of land you have. Actually, it has something to do with how much corn you can grow on your land. That's how they, they rate it. It's ridiculous, but that's how they...
Well, it's not just corn.
Well, no, that's how they set the, that's how they set the price, though, of the value of the land, is like what corn you can grow on it. Yeah, I know, it's crazy. Yeah.
It's just a couple things, because I'm involved in that. And first of all, the values are established by the soil type you have. That's why you have to do your paperwork with soil and water, and it has to be done when you first take a piece of property and it's put into this, trying to get into the ag district. Soil and water fills out your paperwork, it's got to be in by, I believe, 31st, which is too late now for anybody wanting to get into it. And then they come up with your, what your assessment will be taken out of it. And it's based on every seven years, because I found this, you should have also, about, maybe four or five years ago, and the corn was way down, your assessment for it, for what you have deducted, went way down. It's, and that's crazy, but that's how it's based. It's based on the price per corn and how much corn on average can be grown on your soil type. That, that's how that works.
Yeah, that's the way, I had to know how somebody were corn.
You're right, you know.
What pays the burden of the soil testing?
They don't test the soil, they have soil and water already has...
We have soil maps.
They have soil maps, these have been established, Maria, a long time ago. The soil's not going to change. It is what it is.
Just gets worse with a chemical load.
Okay. That was good conversation. Anything else? Marie, do you have any more? You good?
So you should know that to be, to get the tax exemption, they don't have to go before the Farmland Protection Board, but to be included in this process, they do. So anybody who applies gets vetted by the Farmland Protection Board before it comes to the legislature.
What is the advantage, then, of being in this district versus...
So, for example, if somebody is going to run a water line down your road, instead of being assessed for your share of that based on your frontage, you'd have one charge as an agricultural property instead of per foot, like other people. Somebody wants to build a house across the street and complain that they don't like the odors from your farm, and they think you should stop farming, you have a protection to continue your right to farm. There's different things like that that just give you some peace of mind as an agricultural producer that you'll be able to continue to do what, what you have always intended to do.
Is there an acre size limit?
No.
No. It's basically right to farm, is what it is. It's the main thing, it's the right to farm.
I don't think there's an acre limit on that.
I don't think so, no.
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no limit.
So you can do it with one acre?
Yeah, they have some greenhouses and stuff that are small acre that people like to do so.
Half is $40,000 an acre, so, just saying.
Sounds good.
This has nothing to do with, you can, you don't need to be in an ag district to get an ag exemption. Right. Yeah.
Richard?
Yes, I, just to follow up with what was being said, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to take over your meaning, it just happened to be, you're hitting a strong point that I know about, like dealing agriculture.
That's a good conversation.
And the thing is this, for example, if your town out there puts in a new water, I'm just using that as an example, and that line runs along somebody's property that's under an ag district, it's not based on per foot, but along that line, of that property line, there's, if you choose, say you don't want to hook up to the water line, you have a residential, you don't, you have to pay half what they call an EDU for payment on that water line. Agricultural, because I've got one of my constituents, it's a pain in the ass, very buoyant lead, but I can't talk to him, he's got my money, guy. He doesn't, he opts out of it, and when he opts out of that, he doesn't have to pay the EDU or anything. That's the way that works.
Now, you just got our YouTube video, rated PG-13, I want you to know that.
I don't care.
All right, thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Then, there's one final thing that, there's certain things that qualify different parcels for review by the county planning board or planning office, and there, if you're on a county road, a state road, a waterway, historic sites, ag districts is another one. So if somebody wants to do something in a town, and it happens to be within 500 feet of a property that's in an ag district, we get an extra look at it before they can approve whatever is being proposed for that site. So it provides some protection for the property and the neighborhoods.
Great, thanks, Ed. Wait, no further discussion, I'll look for a vote, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Number five, looking for budget modification for the community development terms and tourism and planning for the Oswego River Access Project. Please, go ahead, you.
Yeah, so we had this project funded partially by a grant from the Department of State. There was an opportunity to get a little bit of extra money from the Erie Canal National Heritage Corridor. We made the application, it's not a lot, it's $12,000. And we can match our other grant against this one, so there's no cost to the county, just gives us a little bit more in that project to minimize the actual expense to the county. Right now, it's our intent that in-kind services from the highway department will be our local match. So just add a little money to the project.
It's better than the alternative, right?
Right.
Okay. Go to motion. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Mel. Looking for a second. Paul, thank you. All right, any discussion on what David mentioned?
I just, I just want to say, I'm opposed to the project. We hijack 14,000 feet of waterfront by using a county building that won't give us any taxes on crying riverfront, and now I try to access it. Good luck, but I just feel if this was a business plan, it gets an app. The whole 19, the thank you through the time.
That's great. All right. And just a little bit further, I think we talked a couple times in our meetings, this is the project that would allow for the accessible kayak launch in that section of the river. It is very difficult currently.
Kind of Indiana Jones, actually.
It is, it is currently...
It definitely could.
Diamond rolling rock behind you.
Yeah.
This project will allow for an access that will help to create that, and this is a section of the river being a kayak for myself that I'm looking forward to having better access to, but I think Marsha's point is well taken, so. Any further discussion?
Is there a better site that you could put where you don't have to go outside the steep area to get to the river? Is there another area that could be...
Well, that's a long...
Yeah, that's a part of the effort here. And we do, we did receive a grant through the Department of State, their local waterfront, to form the project to give access there. We've got a decent group of folks who've been meeting to discuss the project, and it seems like there are a number who are pretty excited about having access down there. And I know there were others like that, but that seemed to be the...
The whole corridor between block six and block five is pretty steep banks all the way down. Most of it's privately owned, and this was one that we happened to own already.
It's a bit of a natural swell, it actually kind of does, I mean, you could walk in, you want a cane or some sort of supporting, but the, the point would be that this will help give that access to the project, so.
And there is a public meeting, March 5th, in this building, 6th and IP, where you can see and the proposals or make the comments.
We'll, we'll post that on the website and hopefully share that around. Regent?
Last question. How much out of pocket does this cost us?
Currently, it's not going to...
Right now, it's not planned for any cash out of pocket.
So it'll be no cash ever out of our pocket?
In-kind services from highway, so they're gonna pave that parking lot that's there, kind of, sort of kinder right now, that little turnaround. That's, that pile of shavings that's there is from state job, so we use that as some of the base layer, and then highway will come in and use their equipment and then to put the parking lot in.
How many parks?
We're not really sure yet, but there's gonna be probably around 18. Depends on if we build more or less mid-space for trailers. Typically, you know, this is meant for car top boats, but some people do have these little trailers that they tow behind for goodness and kayaks, so we might add a couple of those. Some of that's going to be through the public comment process to see what folks feel about that.
Ed, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just kind of, it's a summary of the timeline to date, of what's happened, what, how much that other, I think probably that other greenwash.
So first one is 206,103 from the county and 103 from the state, and like in-kind, mostly highway, but also time for my staff and myself, who have been putting it together over the last couple of years, and hopefully it'll all be in-kind from the county.
So then our cost going forward would just be in kind?
Sure. Okay. Any further discussion? I'll look for a vote, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Want to oppose? Okay, so let's jump on to the last resolution of the day. The resolution increasing the authorization for capital project number 94 asset replacement. Dave, you want to publicly put that in?
So this is capital project 94, is improvements to our transportation system that's managed by Oswego County Opportunities, and includes a lot of things under that capital project. This is in addition to it that will allow them to retire a boss and replace it with a new one. No county cost.
All right, a motion? Paul, you ready? Second? No? All right. Great work of this.
I guess so.
Any discussion about this project? All in favor? All right, any opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, let's jump into our ag and farmland protection board appointment. Why do we need a resolution for the one appointment? We don't have this one, it's a story there, it's just the way it's set up, though.
And I, I need to hold this too. This is the one that I need to hold because, once again, I was supposed to, and I think this one even mentions me getting on here, and I don't know if I can because of, I'm not going to be here when they need this chairman.
All right, do we know if this is time-sensitive?
Yes, that's the whole thing with Chris, was like, you really need to have it before, so if we can hold it to the special meeting before the ledge, I'd like to table it to them.
Well, it's not a resolution.
Or...
So, we'll just, how do we do that? We need... If we need it, we'll...
It's not a resolution, that's a recommendation of this committee on the chairman.
Okay, we can point it out, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and then we'll move on discussing that, and if, if we need to put it on the agenda for that special meeting, we'll do it.
Okay, sure.
Everybody sound okay with that? Great, well, that was easy. Let's jump to our important part.
So we don't need to table it, we just...
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's set up for your informational pieces, so I don't think we need to do anything. All right, let's go to...
Well, the chairman does rely on a recommendation from this committee for those members.
That needs to be formally done then by resolution or no?
No.
All right, well, all right.
Well, we have a recommended...
You have a list that you confer.
Yeah, because I thought this was the one that Terry was going to go for another year and not the other one. That's why I was confused. I was like, because Terry said, I guess I have to be chairman for another year.
Poor guy. All right, let's, I'll... I'm gonna, well, now I'll pay a motion to table this. Mel, do you have a second?
Second.
Oh, I can't do both?
I'm sorry, second, sorry.
Oh, thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor of table this motion? Any opposed? Thank you, all right, great. Let's get some other things. Dave, we are looking for an update on our housing.
Sure, so we don't talk about housing office very often, there's four people there, they manage 454 contracts. We are a partner with New York State Office of Housing and Community Renewal. They have a contract with the federal government to administer certain vouchers across New York State. We've had this contract for way longer than I've been here, 20 to 30 years.
Questions?
Our intent is to manage customers who are outside the two cities, but the fact is that once a person has one of these housing vouchers, they can pretty much choose where they'd like to locate, and as long as that, that property meets the minimum guidelines for safety, pretty much can't say, someone who wants to be in our program, you are prohibited from living in the city. If they choose the city, they do. But, as I said, we have 454 contracts, 40% of those are seniors, 55% are families, and 5% are individuals. Of the 454, 55 and a half percent over the whole group are disabled as well. So, as you might guess, given the densities of the population, about 15% is in the city of Oswego, almost 18% in the city of Fulton, and then we go to Richland. Town of Richland has just under 11%, Hastings has just under 12. The next one would be Scribo with about 7 and a half, and Granby with about 4 and a half, Mexico with 5, all the rest are, Manado with 6, all the rest are around 1, 2, or less than 1%. So we have an inspector that travels the county on a regular basis to annually take a look at all those properties, and folks are required to come in regularly for recertification, they have to meet the regular guidelines.
Dave, then the guidelines you're speaking of, those are required to administer, or I'm sorry, they're required by the state, correct?
They are federal guidelines that are passed through their contract to the state and then down to us. So in order for us to change those, the state has to confer, and then the state has to get approval from the feds. So the one, one thing that we have done, that we've had flexibility to do, is we instituted a rule that if the community has rental permits, then you have to choose a house that has an approved rental permit in that community. So we, we can't get into code inspections, that's a municipality's responsibility, but if they have a higher standard through their permit process, we can move to that, and we have done that in the two cities where there are permits.
That's great. Okay, does anybody have any questions? This is exciting. We have not had this report like this, it is available. I wanted to make sure I understand if anybody's interested in discussing this, Dave, and folks in that office do a great job, and, but it is, it is technically under this committee, and I wanted to bring forward some information on this, and you probably have not heard much about the voucher program that the county operates. Also, there is a city operated in.
One in each city, right.
And one in Fulton as well. Concurrently overlapping a bit, but not administrative side of this, with a separate for each.
And we all have, we all have a limited number of vouchers that we administer. So if somebody came in today and said, I'd like to get some housing assistance, they go on a waiting list, that can be as long as sometimes a year to two years, depending on how many people are there. The city's lists are around the same. What you can't control is if somebody in Phoenix, Arizona qualifies for a housing voucher, and once they get that, no matter where they are in the country, they can take that with them to some other place. So sometimes you absorb people. But you can't, we're not free to just give them out to anybody that comes in. We have a specific amount that we're allocated.
And they're required to be residents of the county, is that correct, in order to apply for a new one?
Uh, no, you could come from Anchorage and say, I'd like to live in the Oswego County and can I get housing assistance?
Right, they would need to live here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's my question, are residency require, like something we could implement? Could it be required? I think it's.
Well, you wouldn't be on our program if you didn't choose to reside here, but you don't have to be a resident to apply. If you're accepted and issued a voucher and you go on our program, you would start your residency here, but that doesn't prohibit them from that moving someplace else.
They take it with them?
Yes.
Um, Champlain Commons, I'm told by so many people, and it's not my district, you know, there's been a shooting, it was kind of fairly quiet. Helicopter chase, cars are getting broken into. The general character of the neighborhood is starting to come to an end, so the residences are enraged, as I'm sure everybody knows. I just feel it's one of these situations, build it and they will come. And I feel we're attracting this.
So that's not anything that we're involved in. If somebody who has housing voucher wanted to reside there and they had a vacancy, they could do that, just like they could reside and move the house across the street from here. That met the minimum standard.
Does Champlain Commons have a pilot?
They do not.
I don't know that.
Oh, they do not.
No pilot? And they would be subject to the hundred and fifty dollars per unit, because they're in the, they're in the city?
No, they're in.
But like, you know, through home's widget, per unit, correct? There's no breaks given.
What's a hundred and fifty, I'm sorry?
It's a hundred and fifty a unit for your rental permit.
Oh, in the city of Oswego?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a, I apologize, I don't know if they have a reduction for, you know, if you've got ten, you know, or eleven to three, I'm not quite sure how they do that.
It seems like selective enforcement if they.
I don't know the answer to that though, so that would be a good question, but it's more a city question. But no, Scribo does not have any requirements, any rental permits, really no zoning either, so.
Well, they have code enforcement, they have the New York State Building Code that they're obligated to enforce, but they don't have zoning. They have site plan review for projects. And they have subdivision regulations, but they don't have zoning, so to speak.
Any other questions about the rental program?
If they take that voucher and leave the state to go to another state, does that short side us here in Swig County for vouchers for more people?
No, so we only can issue the amount that we've been allocated. So in order for us to have a voucher to give to somebody else, somebody would have to vacate their voucher for violations of their contract or they would have to pass away and then their voucher becomes available. So there's different things that you're required to certify to, like number of people in your household, how many people are working, what's your income? If you have a guest, they can stay for certain periods of time, like you can have your aunt come and live with you for a couple of weeks, but you can't have your boyfriend move in who has a job and not report that as another person. So if you violate your contract, then they're gonna take that away from you. That would free one up for a new person, but that doesn't mean that that new person couldn't then move to Liverpool.
When Oswego and Fulton kind of raised the bar, did they see fewer permits being used? Not permits, but you know.
Yeah, I would have to talk to their housing managers, I don't know the history of that.
Question. My understanding is they still have a waiting list, so I don't think that their utilization has changed. It's needed, looks like it's still there. Dave, thank you, that was excellent. And again, if anyone has any questions down the road, Dave is very available as well as there. Right downstairs, right downstairs. Awesome, that was great. Do you have any other department updates, Dave?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. We had a nice post by the state of New York for the Children's Museum of Oswego. They did, they do a blog every two weeks. This one happened to be discover the best family friendly indoor activities in New York. And they include the Children's Museum. Also on that list, so understands the quality of the places that they're promoting were Broadway, you'll see a play, Baseball Hall of Fame and The Wild in Tupper Lake, if you've never been there, that's really a nice presentation of the Adirondack. So some high-end places that were on that recommendation list and Children's Museum wasn't included. So that was nice.
So the head of governor said they're probably favorite places in the state.
Two other things quickly, we just did, this was a joint partnership with the city of Oswego to help them promote things to see and do in and around the city. And to also promote specifically on the flip side their marinas. So we worked with their tourism board to put that together. And they're quite pleased with it, they're giving it to charter captains and other people to distribute that various shows and doing their own other distribution as well. And this was also, this is the first time for this magazine, this was a partnership with Todd Hill and various counties included in there. And you'll find beginning on page twenty-eight, what they call the core forest region. That's the Oswego County section, there's a page on Altmar Parish, Palasguy. And a nice trail map in there that shows trails throughout the regions, Redfield and Sandy Creek.
Where's Oswego?
Oswego is not in the Todd Hill region. So that was about a year-long project and came together nicely. Another partnership, so.
Great, thanks, Dave. All right, well then we will jump, is it anybody that wants to today? All right, gentlemen, why don't you step up here, actually I apologize, I did not, this is our first meeting of the year, we do have a new, a couple new legislators here. A new legislator here, so let me do this, let's go around the table, we'll do quick introductions.
Where are you starting, Ben?
Thanks, sir.
About Brad?
Everyone here knows him, so actually, go ahead, Mark.
Mike Redwell, legislative district twenty-four.
Paul House, let's see, this is Pete.
I'm a visitor, Richard Klein, district twelve.
Austin Mielak, DPD Director of Operation Oswego County.
Gary Tell, Oswego County IDA.
Brad Juddell, district seven.
Battey Shumansandis, deputy clerk of the legislature chair.
Harisha, district nineteen.
Joseph, district.
Full Church County Administrator.
Dave Turner? Give me the.
No, legislator, district ten.
Thank you very much, okay.
Who are you?
I'm just so. Let me sit in this chair. Why don't we, go ahead, gentlemen, however you want to do it.
Sure. Well, Gary and I are here today, Mike Redwell couldn't make it, he's actually recovering from some health issues right now, probably will be back for the next meeting that you guys will have in March. But we'll be here trying to build big shoes for this meeting. So I'm gonna try to keep it brief, but we wanted to highlight a few economic development projects. And then we'll talk about the CFA as well. So the three projects that I wanted to discuss today, two of them are financing, one of them is a pilot-related project. First one is Brown Dogwood Products, that is a business owned by Patty Smith in the town of Flaramo. It is a wood product manufacturing company, they actually work with D and D Logging and Macintosh that are, that are pretty much adjacent businesses. The owners have been for several years, they've been selling firewood and animal bedding and they're now going to be expanding their business to include manufacturing millwork, they're gonna be doing plating of rough lumber. And specific to this project, they're going to be kiln drying woods for both making millwork and for Macintosh, because they need to have some heat treating done for their pallets. And right now they're actually having to send stuff all over the place and then have it come back and so this can help them a lot too. So what they're going to be doing with this project, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar total project. The IDA participated with a sixty-five thousand dollar USDA IRP loan for a portion of that project. And like I said, that's going to be to buy a, purchase a kiln that's gonna be used to dry the green lumber for manufacturing siding, paneling, millwork and supplying Macintosh with lumber for heat, to make heat-treated pallets. The project is going to create three jobs with a new payroll of fifty-six thousand, six hundred. And it's going to support manufacturing in a rural area that doesn't really have a lot of other manufacturing. And like I said, the other thing that this project does indirectly is it's actually gonna help make Macintosh more sustainable in the town of Flaramo. Because right now they're having to, they'll have lumber there, then they'll ship it down to either Constancho or to Onondahie County and then they'll be bringing things back. They're gonna be able to reduce a lot of their, their travel time and logistics by doing this, getting the services of this project. I also wanted to say this is also a women-owned business, I mentioned her name before, but just wanted to kind of state that, it's good to see manufacturing on Flaramo.
Yeah, and this actually, like this highlights one of the goals of our shared study, which mentioned that we really need to be investing in the things that are succeeding. We need to be investing in the supply line and in the different track. And so it's exciting to see some, a project coming from a company that is succeeding and starting to kind of double down on what is working around there.
Yeah, we've done a lot of looking into the metal manufacturing supply chain, but I mean, this is really important as well in the wood product manufacturing as well. The next project to discuss is Universal Properties of New York LLC, this is fifty-eight, sixty-three, Sync Avenue, Village of Mexico. This was the, this was actually the site of a former bowling alley in the Village of Mexico. The, that project, that building was demolished and fortunately demolished and fifty-six hundred square foot of it was saved and renovated into space that'll be used by CITI Voces as well as the food pantry. The IDA participated in this project with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar pilot EDF lease for specialized HVAC equipment for that building. Like I said before, it's going to be occupied by CITI Voces, which will be developing some flexible classroom space and offices. And it will be the main location for the food pantry, which from what I've heard is a pretty neat little location over there, it's gonna be really helpful service for the county. See here, so that's, it's anticipated to create and retain ten FTEs.
Are those both tax exempt?
They are tax exempt entities, yes. I believe, and that was actually one of the reasons that the IDA was wanting to participate in this project because of the, to make that space viable for it to get some assistance on that project, or else it would have been pretty difficult to make any first work for that.
Gary, do you have a note there?
No, I think there is a pilot.
There is a pilot as well, yeah.
Yeah, on this project. We based it on what was being assessed by the town of Mexico and we started there with a two percent excise rate, excise rate of three years.
So it's not taking anything away, it's just gonna go up next. Okay, and then the last project I wanted to discuss in terms of these financing projects, this is a pilot project, this is Abundant Solar Power LLC. This is in the town of Albion, this was actually just approved back in January. This is a development of a five-megawatt solar renewable project, it's a community solar project and it's located on a thirty-five acre former gravel pit in the town of Albion. Owned by the town of Richland, so it's a little interesting situation. This is a project developed by Abundant Solar, who was, actually they were selected via RFP by the Central New York Regional Planning Development Board to partner with on solar projects. And the reason that they picked them is because they find some creative solutions to work on sites that have limited development potential, like sites like this that form a gravel bed, things like brownfield sites, and so they're looking to do more projects like this. This is going to have an annual generation capacity of nine million kilowatt hours, which is enough to serve a seven-hundred-and-fifty, depending, I guess, how energy efficient you are, anywhere from seven-hundred-and-fifty to twelve-hundred-and-fifty homes. It's included forty-one, it will include forty-one construction jobs. It's, this project is going to receive a pilot for twenty years. These projects are interesting because they could, there's another program through the state that they could take, which would make them tax-free for fifteen years. But they, they elected to go for a pilot on this project, which will actually, it'll provide an annual payment of twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars a year, which is quite a bit more than I think a fifteen hundred dollars it's paying now as just a, as a gravel pit. So it's a large increase in taxes to the different taxing authorities. It's gonna create clean energy, five megawatts of that, and help to get some CO2 out of the air. So it's a good project. The summary of these projects in terms of, the three projects are gonna create, they're going to create three new jobs, they're gonna retain ten jobs. And it's an investment of almost nine million dollars of these, these three projects, so any questions?
Questions? Good question.
And then I'm just gonna kind of briefly go through the consolidated funding application, which is kind of the New York State Hunger Games of grant programs that happens every year. That, those awards were announced back in mid-December and Oswego County, eleven projects were awarded for approximately four point, a little over four point three million dollars. And I just wanted to kind of give a brief summary of some of those projects, one of them is actually an IDA project, so I guess I'll start there. So down on the former Nestle site, the IDA is in the midst of doing the design and engineering for a thirty thousand square foot manufacturing startup facility. And that project was awarded eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a four point three million dollar total project cost. The IDA is anticipating that project will, will create or retain thirty jobs in the city of Fulton. It's going to bring manufacturing back to that site, which has been gone now since two thousand and three. And help us to attract and keep some of our best manufacturing companies here in Oswego County. So I go through a list of some of the other projects that were awarded. So CDM is another project that's down at the Nestle site, that is, they're developing a nine thousand square foot building on, at the corner of Fay and Seventh Street, the north corner of that. That's gonna be leased by Charter and they're going to consolidate a lot of their operations from Northern Onondahie County and Oswego into that, that site. That was a two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollar award for, I believe that's a one point four million dollar project cost in that range. I don't have it right in front of me here, but I believe from what I remember it was around there. So that's another good project there, we'll keep them in the county, because they were looking at some other places as well, possibly Northern Onondahie County. Another project that was approved, Lightall Performance Materials, they're the former Internet Interface Solutions on four eighty-one in the town of Alney. They received a seven hundred thousand dollar CFA award towards the, what they're looking to do is restart one of their product lines. They have a couple decommissioned pieces of equipment, massive pieces of equipment down there. And they're looking to restart that line, which would create new jobs down there and help to retain what they have. Because right now I believe they're working off of one line really. And so this would help to make them a little bit more sustainable down there. That, that project would include refurbishing that machinery as well as getting some new equipment to finish that line on. Another project, and I'm sure Dave could probably say more about this one, but the Campolus renovation, those two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to winterize. those two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, to winterize camp hallis, um, to do a four-season use. Uh, let's see, there's, and there's several projects that are related to infrastructure, which is another major issue that was identified in the, um, Oswego County Economic Advancement Plan and, and a lot of those projects were able to be addressed through this. Um, Village of Cleveland, a million dollars for, uh, water system improvements. Uh, town of Oswego was able to get, uh, three hundred thousand through the CFA and then another couple million dollars through the, through Ready towards their, uh, lake shore sewer construction project. That's going to add several miles of, uh, sewer line along the lakefront, that's going to actually go over and attach to Freddie and Boulevard and help make that a little bit, uh, easier sell, help develop that. Because that's one of the main things that's missing right now, sewer service, so, uh, to, to get the kind of businesses that you want to get there.
Guaranteed that we'll get deep rooties that, you know, Oswego town fixture operating without, with, 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 with high water. You imagine it's been very difficult, many of you that's out there have experienced it, so it's an exciting project.
It's also connected to the residences as well, it's a, it's an economic development project, but it's also going to help for, for residents as well that are, that are long.
Water quality issue too, was those septic failed and they're right on the lakeshore, so.
Yeah, you got a big problem. Um, uh, let's see, uh, Sandy Creek was, uh, they got a, uh, shoreline study grant for thirty thousand dollars. That's going to help them to do some resiliency feasibility study work. Um, the Port of Oswego got a twenty thousand dollar grant for the, to, is a matching grant for the, looking at the feasibility study of developing a performing art center on the water on the edge that's owned by the port on the west side. Uh, it's going to be an interesting project to see how that develops, uh, that could be, if, if that is proven to be fruitful, that could be a, um, a large impact to the city of Oswego, but it's still pretty preliminary and they're looking at the feasibility of it now, but, um, if it, if it's proved successful, that could be a major project.
Just putting a little plug to, our county development team also acquired a brownfield, uh, grant a few years ago that helped, uh, with some of the study for that project they're talking about, so. Good one.
In terms of a few other projects, I just wanted to go over some of the meetings. Um, they were able to get a New York Main Street grant for two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, which is going to help them to do some, uh, various projects that are along, um, in the village downtown area. I think it's like four or five projects that they've identified as, as part of that, there might be some other money for some other projects in there. Um, but that's, uh, projects to do some beautification facade work, um, maybe build out a couple stores. And, um, let's see here, let's, I guess skip one, just want to make sure I don't miss any. Um, oh, there was one, and this is not one that's, uh, economic development related, but this is just another CFA one. This was, um, a shared public safety software project, that's a CFA one, that was, uh, for five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. So, so the funding that goes to the CFA, a lot of the projects are economic development, but there's other programs under there that different departments of municipalities can, can apply for and they're typically all competitive and we're pretty excited to see eleven projects, uh, like I said, four-point-three million be funded in Oswego County. Um, outside of that, uh, the month before, the Ready, um, grants were announced, sixteen million dollars coming to Oswego County for that. Um, just this past Friday, um, there were some, there were businesses that were, there was a deadline for, um, small business awards at the Ready. Um, I don't know the exact number yet of how many of those, because they're actually being looked at right now, but we'll know soon on that. And, um, you know, so between the Fulton DRI being announced, Oswego finishing all their projects, CFA does here and Ready, there's a lot of money and, and activity happening in Oswego County, so it's going to be an exciting year.
That's great, um, any questions on any of the items that Austin mentioned?
Just have a kind of a side, uh, comment, yeah, Austin mentioned the, uh, food bank, uh, that second project. And you don't hear about these things, uh, often, the departments don't talk about them, but, uh, in addition to the regular work that our folks do from day to day, uh, from time to time, they take on special initiatives and the Office of Aging in the month of December, uh, put a food drive together for the, uh, food bank and they collected across, uh, all of their colleagues in various departments, about sixty boxes of food for the food bank, so to help you envision that a little bit better, don't ask me how I know this. But that's, the height of that rail, the length of that wall and two boxes deep. So it was quite a truckload of food that, uh, they did, Office of Aging didn't blow their horn about it, but it was good work on their part. Kind of things that you guys should know about from time to time.
Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to, one of my, my comment, uh, I just want to commend the staff of Operation Oswego County and the IDA for the work they're doing while Mike is recovering. I mean, they pulled together staff meetings and everything, they really, uh, worked hard to make sure we don't miss a beat. So Austin, Kevin LaMontagne, Teresa, Karen and Evelyn are doing a tremendous job and I want to thank them for what they're doing.
Great. Great report, um, the jobs piece is of great interest. Um, do you know offhand, not in the annual report, the year-round report, but how many jobs were created in nineteen and how many retained?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, uh, I can make sure that we could get that for you for the next DVD meeting. Um, some of that is still, um, we don't, we don't kind of finalize that until about this time, maybe in a couple of weeks here in terms of all the projects that came through in nineteen, uh, but I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that.
If a business gets an award or a pilot and they project they're going to, let's just take a number, for example, eight employees and they end up just hiring one, is there any repercussion to that?
There are, yeah, there's callbacks in terms of if you don't meet your numbers, now usually there's a little bit of give in there, but if you say you're going to create eight and you only create one, you're really not getting even close. Uh, you know, and typically, um, a lot of those are projections and so you're basing it on where you think the market's going to be and what happens. If, if something happens that, uh, and they can make a good case, you know, you could, you could give them more time to do that. Usually it's, it's within a certain amount of time, you know, it's not like within one year, it's usually within three or five years or something like that. Uh, but if you were to create one job and you said you were going to create eight, there, there's provisions for callbacks for pilot agreements and for, uh, other benefits, the state does the same thing.
I can say that there was one this, this, this following year, point nineteen, that did fail. They hit it and they were, as they did this, this year, I was there, they did remove their pilot from them, so.
We, we do every captures depending, but we try to work with the businesses just to make sure because there's a lot of factors that go into it when they start out a new business, especially the economy, the demands, a lot of things. So initially we try to work with them and then if need be, like Tim says, then we have to, uh, do what we need to do.
If you say you're going to create fifty jobs and you create forty jobs, you're getting, you're pretty close and, you know, there's probably some factors that happen that, you know, you're not going to go after them for that, but if you're going to create fifteen, you create ten, that's a big problem, yeah.
That's a good question, that's great, um, any other questions? Wonderful. Well, just a reminder, the, uh, there is a, uh, an IDA board meeting once a month, it is televised now, livestream televised. So a thank you to the average Oswego County folks, uh, Gary's got to wear his tuxedo.
It's a G-rated, uh, meeting.
Not just the IDA meetings, but the public hearings as well, so if you can't make it to a public hearing in your, in your jurisdiction, then you could still follow it, um, or, or tell your constituents to follow it, um, online.
And if there's any questions, just call the office and they'll make sure you get the link or however it's set up.
Or you can just go to YouTube and, and type it up. Also, I do want to thank you folks as well, because I don't know if anyone had a, uh, a public meeting in their district as legislators, but starting this year, um, I've already seen that, there has been a, not only are the required folks who are updated on the public meetings, the taxing authorities, uh, but the folks in Upper Street County have also reached out to the legislators directly as well in addition to. So I appreciate that, I know folks are interested in that as well, so thank you.
Well, as a side note too, we had the public hearing in Albion on the five-megawatt solar farm. Um, the legislator for that district, Herb Yurden, the school district and others, what, because they couldn't make the public meeting, they did see it live on YouTube or whatever and so they got information on that and then they attended the meeting and, uh, they were better informed on what we were doing.
That was great.
How are the public meetings publicized and what's the best way for people to find out?
Sure, it's, uh, ten days' notice through the newspapers, uh, we also listed on our website, um, we listed, uh, put it on our door as well. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's, it's in the local papers, um, like we have to give ten days' notice before it's done. And, yeah, so we hit, is there any other notes?
Yeah, we also send a notice to the taxing, you know, the county, the school district and the, and the.
Yeah, so we're going to know, yes, we're going to know, we're going to get invitations, but Joe Moe on the street that might, you know, have an interest.
Sure.
You know, because it is public.
Right, the, the, the best way that they find it would be in the local newspaper, um, or if they're, if they're checking our website regularly, they can see that as well.
All right, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, that was a great update, appreciate you filling in, awesome, um, I guess we're all set?
I have a question, how's our solar? Are we seeing any progress?
Um, I don't know, you have to check with John Booker, that's under his department now, that it's fully operational. It, uh, varies based on the weather.
As well as, I'm not a good teacher, so.
So can I get some numbers on that? That was, yeah.
Is late plans a nice event?
Okay.
Yeah, and so, just Marie, uh, on that note, one, the one variable, two variables you can't control, weather, something, and the, uh, statewide price of electricity. So when you look at a pro forma and you say, well, historically, electricity has increased a half a percent a year for the last thirty years, you put that into pro forma and then electricity starts decreasing a half a percent. There's no local control over that market.
But it still should have taken our need off the grid and maybe vacated us. You know, I mean, it still should be a more positive flow regardless of a half a percent. Yeah, I understand our number would be lower, but I suspect the numbers are in the ditch. I, I'd love to see.
That'd be good information, I, I agree, we'll look forward to that, okay, thank you, um, anything else? If not, question over there, question, question in a second?
We do get, there's like a payback.
Paul, thank you, Paul David. Hi, I'm supposed to come right, we are, thank you, everyone.